I am opening the April 9, 2013 regular meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order and I need a motion for us to go into close, to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant of North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to discuss personnel matters protected by state law and to prevent disclosure of student information that is privileged and confidential pursuant of FERPA 20, USC 1212G, and North Carolina GS 115C 402. Do I have a motion to that effect?
The move.
Chad makes the motion, do I have a second? Paul seconds. All in favor? We are now in closed session. Davie County Board of Education will reconvene the April 9 regular meeting. Thank you so much for all of you being here. It's great to see all these young people and at this time we are going to have our invocation. As we gather this evening, I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance this evening. Further, we are thankful for the opportunity to govern and the freedoms that we enjoy. We also pause to remember our students, faculty members, and families in our system as well as our community who are facing challenges. Our positive thoughts are with them. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and the citizens of Davie County. Peace be with you. At this time, I'm honored to introduce to you Ms. Lena Mitchell and the Davie 4-H Shooting Sports Club that will lead us in the pledge. I remember I had the opportunity to meet them a couple of weeks ago with their awards banquet. It was wonderful. Next on the agenda, we need to move to adopt our agenda. I need a motion to adopt. Chad makes the motion. I need a second. Paul seconds. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Seven zero. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be May the 7th. At 6 o'clock is the regular, 5:15 we start with our closed session. So our next regular meeting will be May the 7th. And now we need to look at our minutes and I need a motion to approve our March 5 minutes as presented. Carol makes the motion. I need a second. Wendy seconds. All in favor? We also need approval of Tuesday, February the 19th, 2013 minutes. Clint makes the motion. I need a second. Clint seconds. All in favor? Seven zero. What did I say? Pause seconds. I'm sorry. I was looking at Clint. Okay. Did I get all of those? Everybody? Next on the agenda is the board report of the events and I'm so glad that you can go online to get all of the events that we take part of so I don't have to read them all to you tonight. But starting on the 18th of April, we will be with advisory councils at South Davie, Kool-Aimie and Moxville Elementary. We also have the Teacher Appreciation Assistant Banquet at 6:00 at Advance Methodist Church on the 22nd. The 23rd, the Volunteer Breakfast. And then at 25th, we will be touring Moxville. And on the evening of the 25th is Character Education Night, so I'm excited about that. And the aerobics are on the 26th at 4:00 at Davie High School. May is a full calendar, so I do want you to please check and make sure as you go through the calendar, look at the dates for dear graduation in May and please let me know who's going to be attending those because I do like to have at least two board members at each of the dear graduations. And that's all. And you know, the last day of school is going to be June 7th. It's just right around the corner. It's amazing. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hartness for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wow. It's loud there, wasn't it? It's great to see everyone out tonight. I hope you all had a restful holiday and a wonderful spring break. It's good to see so many of our students here with us tonight. I hope our bad weather is behind us. Last Thursday, we had snow and sleet and today it was 80 degrees and I had pollen all over my car, so hopefully spring is here to stay. We had a full agenda in March. I want to thank the board for their continued support and for spending time with our parent advisory councils at Ellis, Cornetzer, and Shady Grove. I think it's so important for us to go out and hear from our parents. I want to thank the board for taking time to visit each of our schools, especially going out and eating lunch at our schools. Several of you ate lunch at Kool-Aimie in March. We appreciate that. I had a chance to attend a superintendent's quarterly meeting in Raleigh in March and heard from our state superintendents, some of our leadership in Raleigh, and I was very encouraged that Governor McCrory spent about an hour and 15 minutes with superintendents in a very healthy dialogue, talking about education issues. This was the day before his budget was released. We weren't as excited once the budget was released, but we were encouraged and so encouraged that Governor McCrory is listening and is having dialogue with superintendents and teachers and principals across the state and really trying to understand how laws and rules that are made in Raleigh affect people across the state. There have been a lot of activity in the General Assembly. As you probably get your weekly updates from the School Boards Association, I would encourage the board to pay attention to bills that have been introduced, bills that would affect Davie County schools directly and for us to stay tuned to those updates and stay in touch with our legislature and share with them how key issues might affect Davie County. And I will do my best to keep you apprised of issues that we need to take action on. I want to thank the board, all of you who supported me by your attendance at the State of Davie meeting at Kenderton hosted by the Business Journal. When you hear about all the good things that are happening in Davie County, it's hard not to be really excited about the future of our community and I want to thank you for being there to support me and serving on that panel. I also want to thank all the board that was there and a large group of citizens and parents and students who came to the presentation with the Board of County Commissioners on April the 1st. We had tremendous turnout and support. For those who missed the presentation, it is posted on our website. We have a link on our website called New High School Info. That includes not only the video from those presentations, but the slides from our architects, frequently asked questions that we hear regularly that the staff has answered. So we're trying to continue our efforts to be transparent and keep everyone informed about what's going on with the new high school proposal. I have a lot more to share tonight, but I'll do that during the budget update session and when we discuss a resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's now for our recognitions and Donna, I believe you have the Office Professional of the Year. Stephanie and Donna.
To take this opportunity to honor one of my colleagues, Mrs. Judy Cornhour, who is recognized this year as the Office Professional for 2012-2013. Even though Judy could not be with us tonight, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly recognize this. It is a great accomplishment for her and a great achievement. And as you see Judy in the next few days, please take time to congratulate her on this wonderful achievement. Judy joined the Davie County Schools family in 1991 as a financial assistant at Davie High School. Since then, she has moved to the county office and serves as our Assistant Finance Officer and Payroll Supervisor in our district. Judy's duties and responsibilities impact every employee in our school system. Reliability, accountability, honesty, integrity, focus, hard work, positive attitude, you name it, all of these are roles and responsibilities and words that really fit in Judy's life and in her personality and is even reflected tonight as she is taking care of a family member who could not be with us. So again, please take time and congratulate Judy Cornhour on being the Office Professional for Davie County Schools for 2012-2013.
The men's varsity basketball. Mr. Wallace isn't here. Barry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Hartness. I'm here to recognize two outstanding achievements in athletics. First of all, with Coach Apsher, Coach Kenny, and the team members that are here come up front, the boys' basketball team at Davie High. This year, Coach Apsher's team finished with a 21-6 overall record. They were the champions of the Sam Moyer Christmas Tournament and also they were the CPC Conference Tournament Champions. So congratulate them for a great season.
Great group of young men out here and giving another good season for us. Great crowd to the coaches group, not only quality on basketball, but quality off and what an honor it is to be coaching this year and representing Davie County. It's a matter of all times, I feel like. At this time, I recognize those who are here with us tonight. Coach Kenny, my assistant, Joel Carter, Caleb Martin, Peyton Sale, Curtis Bann, Chris Campbell, Lane Bennett, Cody Martin, Nathan Calabino, and Nathan Hines. Please give him a round of applause.
The next team I'd like to ask to come up is our competition cheerleading team. Our cheerleading coaches is Coach Stage, Coach Vetter, Coach Carter. If you would come up along with your members, if we have enough room up here. As these young ladies and men are walking up front here, I'll just read some of their accomplishments that they had this year. They were the 2013 North Carolina High School Athletic Association Large Coed State Champions. They were the North Carolina Cheerleading Association Coed State Champions. And to top it off, they were the 2013 Universal Cheerleading Association Super Coed World Champions. Let's give them a round of applause.
By far, this is the most talented team we've ever coached and I think we're back and proved them that. This season, they were 27-4, placed the highest we ever have at a national competition. This...
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to change our recognition just a little bit. We had an exciting announcement this past week. I was notified, Mr. David Smith, about our Odyssey of the Mind team. So David, I'm going to ask you, if you will, to come to the podium and make your announcement.
Good evening. I'm David Smith. Thank you, Dr. Hartness, Madam Chair, and the school board. I do have some prepared comments, but I guess I'll just skip a lot of the formality part of it and say I'm pleased to announce that the Davie High Odyssey of the Mind team competed in the regional and state level tournaments earlier this year and last year. The team needed to place first or second in their division at the state tournament to qualify for the world finals. I'm pleased to inform you this evening that the Davie High Odyssey of the Mind team has qualified and they have been invited to the World Odyssey of the Mind Finals to be held May 23rd and 25th at Michigan State University at East Lansing, Michigan. The team members include Hampton Smith, Rachel Baker, Brooke Summers, Morgan Fuller, Josh Lancaster, Noah McDoanell, and Melanie, how do we pronounce her name? Prachelis. And I'm the coach. I need to tell you briefly that this process began at Pine Brook Elementary School a few years ago with the leadership of then-teachers at Pine Brook and instilled within my son Hampton and others the desire to use this competition as an outlet. Through Pine Brook, and then when we got to North Davie, there was not a team offered and so Hampton came up and said, "What do you think about coaching in Odyssey of the Mind team?" And I said, "Well..." And he said, "You don't get to think. You are the coach." And through the gracious support of Tanya Carr at North Davie, we fielded three teams during the three years there. We graduated from North and landed at Davie High School and guess what? There's not an Odyssey of the Mind program at Davie High. And that same question came, as a matter of fact, is have you registered our team for Odyssey of the Mind? And I said, "Well, what team?" And he had already formed a team and you see the fruits. Last year, through the approval of Jeff Wallace, who was then-principal, we began the process. We fielded the team and we entered the regional competitions and the state competition. We finished third in the state last year. This year, we recruited one new team member to round out our team to a total of seven. They had a fire in their eyes, a fire in their belly as well, and we entered into, we started again in September and our house and garage has been turned into Odyssey of the Mind Central and we began the process of solving a problem. I want to share with you the problem that they solved. Architecture the Musical. For this problem, teams were to create and present an original performance that included a replica of a documented architectural structure that was built between 1,000 A.D. and 1,600 A.D. The performance had to include three works of art that disappear and two characters that go on a quest to find them. When the works of art are found, they will be incorporated into the replica. The performance must also include two songs with original lyrics and accompanied by some type of choreographed movement. They got to do all of that in eight minutes with a budget, a set budget of $125. I'm pleased to announce that they met that criteria and again finished second in the state to go to world finals. Along with that competition, they're also taken into a room, really sequestered in a room and given what's called a spontaneous problem, which we don't know what that is in advance. It is about thinking on your feet, out of the box, and even beyond the box. I'm here tonight to really ask for your support on two different levels. One is the support that I truly think that Odyssey of the Mind is a program that we should consider implementing and adding to our overall sort of educational delivery system here in the county. It is, if you will, the A added to STEM which creates great steam. This is the type of program that includes not only science, technology, engineering, and math, but it also brings out the arts. It brings out drama. It brings out creative speaking. It brings out creative problem solving. In the business world today, if you ask recruiters and businesses what they're looking for most are future employers that can think on their feet, think out of the box, beyond the box in a creative and innovative way. And not every educational delivery system can offer that, but I truly believe that if we begin to look at what Odyssey of the Mind is offering, that this could be sort of a school-wide, district-wide opportunity. Not every student can be a part of a sports team or even a team, but with Odyssey of the Mind, if there is enough coaches to go around, every student in our school system could be a part of an Odyssey of the Mind team, which really talks about exercising both mind, body, and spirit. The students and the team, they have to do the project on their own. As coach, I can give advice, I can show them how to hammer a nail, but I can't hammer the nail for them. They have to do that. I can teach them how to think about different types of problems, but they are responsible completely for solving the problem, coming up with the solution, and then they're judged on that solution. So again, I'm seeking your support in at least exploring this as a countywide type of opportunity that has been done in the past, but maybe we could add to that. There is talk, and I know Hampton is thinking about the idea of maybe approaching the Davie Community Foundation or other sponsors, of creating sort of a bed of money, a seed-type program that would allow teachers to begin to implement this into their curriculum. We could garner ideas and then students who want to be a part of this, we could foster that. We've already received, I know Hampton and others have received inquiries from fellow students of, "Well, are you guys going to have an opening in next year's team or will there be another team?" So I think there's already some excitement with that. Another aspect, and I'm seeking your support, is that one of the, I guess I have found personally shortcomings is that we have a lot of booster clubs for all different types of activities, from sports to band, but there's not really an academic booster club throughout the county, which is maybe something we could explore later. But because of that, there's really no one out there right now that I could go to and say, "We need your support in helping get it, in helping us to get to the world finals." We have created a very extensive budget and I'll present that to you following my remarks, but we're looking at about a $10,000 trip and we've already begun the fundraising process and I know Davie County and I know that community support will be there to help us. But I guess I'm also looking to the school board to see if there's any way that you might find some seed money that could help us to make this effort. I also look at that, at this, is that this group of students, they initiated this on their own. They were not pushed into this by a teacher. It was not part of a curriculum. They chose to do this. They chose to do this in addition to their extensive coursework. All are very much excelling students and they go above and beyond in a lot of different ways. They spend endless hours on Saturdays, Sundays, and I just want to applaud them for all of their efforts. But what they are really doing is they are living into, I think, what you all have already adopted and that is you're trying to create basically an educational delivery system that is world-class and that people come here to look at how we are educating our students. And so it is really to me sort of serendipitous that at the same time you all are looking at sort of what does it mean to be a world-class student. These students have been working behind the scenes, behind closed doors. They have been excelling at this and they're now ready to compete on the world stage. And so I really want to applaud them, both as coach and as a parent, but also as a Davie County citizen, because I think it speaks well of what you all are doing as an educational delivery unit. So I just thank you for this time and look forward to working with you all in the future. So again, there's a few of the students here that are part of the team. If you guys would stand up. All of these guys here and the rest of the team, they go into a different character. Josh Lancaster there in the middle, he was a blind, what was your, not evil witch, a blind woman witch. And if you can imagine Josh with thick red lipstick all around, outside of his lips and he had a blind character and he sang. Rachel there was the sweet witch and then we had the mirror man and also the genie. It all fits into the play. I encourage you to go online to Fox 8, WGHP, Fox 8. They were gracious to do a report on us yesterday. You can go online and, in fact, I need to send you the link to the video, which is part of the competition. As long as you don't share that too much because we don't want our competition to see what we've been doing. So anyway, if you have any questions, thank you guys. If you have any questions, I would entertain those, but I do really appreciate this opportunity and look forward to working with you on this endeavor.
Board, do you have any questions for David? I want to just say again, congratulations on behalf of the school system. We're really proud of you, guys. I wish you the very best as you travel to Michigan. I know you will represent Davie County well. You will represent America well because you'll be competing with students from all over the world, from Japan and China and different places, and we're extremely proud of you.
As being on the board for a long time, I want to say, I remember when you started the Odyssey of the Mind. I remember the children, how excited they were. You grew just a little bit since then and good luck. I repeat what Dr. Hartness says and on behalf of the board, we wish you the best. And it does take a lot of hard work to get to where you've come to. I also know, being a judge, if you've ever had the opportunity to be a judge, you need to try that. I had one year to learn five different problems to be a judge at Wake Forest. It is intense. So anyone out there who would like to volunteer to be a judge, Odyssey of the Mind would love to have you. It is an experience you will never forget. It's amazing. Noel, speaking of arts.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members, Dr. Hartness. We are very excited, but almost in disbelief, that it is time to announce the Art Smart Festival again. It seems this comes around every year a little quicker. It could just be me. I have two colleagues here who are going to give you a little more information, but I also have colleagues in the audience. Lou Wilson is here from our elementary music program. Please stand up. Brenda Moscow is here from our middle school music program. Elaine Snow is here from our high school music program. Catherine Reeves is here from drama. Dana Roberts is our visual art teacher now in the middle schools. And we have three high school art teachers who are at a reception in Clemens for their talented students tonight. They could not join us, but I said that was a very good excuse. And we also have a lot of our members who are actually practicing with students tonight. So it was something that not every single person could come to. This year, our emphasis is on the family. We will have activities that invite the family members to come in and participate and be part of the arts together with us. and be part of the arts together with us. And I'm going to let Dana Roberts tell us more about that. And Catherine Reeves has put together a very exciting live video invitation for you. Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Hartness, Madam Chairwoman, and School Board, and all of our friends and family in Davie County. We're really excited this year about the festival. What better way to come together with our family than to have creative moments and share some memories that really last a really long time? And we encourage everybody to come. It's May 11th at North Davie from nine to one, and it's free for everybody to enjoy. This year, we have a lot of activities that we'll be engaging. We've got portraiture. You can draw your spouse. Or children. We have printmaking, lots of painting activities, Chinese brush painting, Japanese sumi painting. We also have lots of musical experiences for you to enjoy. The combined elementary chorus is a big finale for us, and all of our bands and all of the choral groups will come forward and share in the spotlight. And the theater department is really amazing. We've got some highlights from this year's performances. I had the privilege of seeing the works that Catherine and Brenda Moscow did with the students at South Davie on guys and dolls, and I was so amazed at the talent that comes out of them in these experiences. They're also going to be showing a Google SketchUp of how the kids put together the set designs and work on the computer and, you know, think about how they're going to design their sets and their costumes. So it's a neat experience to see all of that. If you're in the mood for bagpipes, there will be a beautiful performance by our special guests, the Jamestown Bagpipe Group, and we hope that we'll see you there. And I know that Catherine, I'd like to brag about her for a little bit, she's got a lot of talent, and she's worked really hard on this video that we're about to see, going from school to school and getting a nice background look at what's going on in preparation. So thank you so much for your support, and we hope to see you in May.
Good evening, Dr. Hartness, Madam Chairwoman, and School Board members. I'm Catherine Reeves. I'm the drama teacher at both Ellis Middle School and South Davie Middle School, and I am honored to be here this evening on behalf of our arts educators in the county as we prepare for this very exciting upcoming Arts Smart Festival in May. And I had the privilege of working on this video project, which we'll show momentarily, that allowed me to venture out into the community and really get to see what's going on in other arts classrooms. I get to see it at Ellis and South Davie every day, just what our arts teachers, our core teachers are doing on an everyday basis to integrate core and the arts and technology and the arts, and it's very exciting. But it was definitely a treat to get out into the community and go over to Moxville Elementary, also over to visit South again, now that I'm over at Ellis, and to the high school, and see various classes performing and preparing for this Arts Smart Festival. And like I was saying, I witnessed a number of very exciting things going on in these classrooms in preparation for Arts Smart. I saw high schoolers making pottery, eighth graders reading music and collaborating together to create the most beautiful sounds, and both middle and elementary school students discovering the art of Chinese brush painting. Dana Roberts brought in a guest artist to actually work with her students, who is Chinese brush, she does Chinese brush painting, and you'll see in the video, it's depicted, just a really exciting thing for the students to be able to work with her. And I wish so much I could have been able to visit several of the other schools, or all of the schools, and each arts classroom in the community and county, but unfortunately, my schedule only allowed me to visit several, which you'll see in the video. But as Dana was saying, there are a lot of things, exciting things going on at this festival, with the elementary choral and music programs, the bands from all the middle schools, the high school, elementary school, chorus, so many exciting things that we're looking forward to. So while I was filming, I do want to say too, I was absolutely blown away by the independent, self-motivated learning that I witnessed when I was filming. The students were working by themselves, but also collaborating. They were guiding themselves through this process. I wish you could have seen the potters and how they were so determined to create these beautiful works of art, and if they made a mistake, they corrected themselves, and they made sure that they went back and did it again, and did it differently, and did it the right way. Even elementary school students with the Chinese brush painting, it was very exciting to see what they were learning about culture and about different countries and different art forms and the history of art. Also in Dana's classroom, very, very similar things going on with integrating the history of art and different, of the essential standards combining with our classrooms. So without further ado, it's my honor to present to you our Arts Smart promotional video, and we hope that you attend Arts Smart on May 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All right?
I'd like to thank our teachers again for coming out and for Catherine Reeves for all her extra effort, and Dana Roberts for her continued leadership. I would like to point out, when you see these students engaged in the arts, they're using multiple levels of thinking. And right now, research indicates that those students who are exposed to the arts tend to rise above their peers in various levels of accomplishment. I'm going to get you more data on that, but just remember, the Saturday before Mother's Day is where it's happening, at North Davie Middle School, nine to one. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have not had the opportunity to attend, please do. I think I've been the past two, three years, and it is something to behold. And it is a family gathering, so please bring your children. It is something that they will enjoy as well as you. And it, how, the work that goes into them getting ready in the evening before and then having to go back and take down is amazing, that the accomplishments that these teachers do and how the students work together. Tonight, I want to say thank you to everyone who we honored, from the sports to the academics to the arts. That's what Davie County is about, and I really do appreciate this group of people who work with the children. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda, and we need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Paul makes the motion to approve. Is there a second? Chad seconds. Is there any discussion or any questions on any of these? Seeing none, I will call for the vote to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor? Seven zero. Now we're moving to our business items. The Cooleme Elementary School, HVAC back, Dr. Hartness or Deborah, since Jeff's not here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hartness. You have before you this evening a business item to, for the Cooleme Classroom Suites six and seven, an HVAC replacement bids. The bids for the, for this project were open on February 19th, and the bid tabulation is attached to, on your iPad for reference, on board docs. Each bid included three alternates, and those alternates are existing boiler room demolition, a deduction from the base bid to exclude electrical subcontractor work, and number three, redo the lighting. The low bid is from Professional Air Systems of Rural Hall, North Carolina. It's a hard word to say. Rural. Yeah. The base bid plus the alternate, alternate number one and a $5,000 contingency totals The Board of Education has drawn down $105,000 of lottery funds for this project. The remaining $133 can be funded with unbudgeted revenue or fund bounce if the entire $5,000 contingency is needed. Our recommendation is that you approve the, this business item as presented and award the contract to Professional Air Systems at their base bid with the alternate number two. I'm sorry, that should read alternate number one, and the $5,000 contingency for a total project cost of $105,133. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, I will call for a motion to approve the Professional Air System base bid with the alternative one and the $5,000 contingency for the total price of $105,133. Do I have a motion to that effect? Clint makes the motion. Do I have a second? Paul seconds. Any more discussion? Any questions? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Seven zero.
No, no, it was on my computer.
I'm sorry. Next on the agenda is the resolution for the new Davie High School. Dr. Hartness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After our meeting with commissioners, I was notified by the county manager's office that they requested that we submit a resolution with our request in addition to my presentation. So attached to this agenda item is a resolution summarizing the actions the board has taken in the past. That is there for your review and for your approval.
You need to read that resolution.
I know that you do. Yeah. It's there for.
You have the resolution in front of you, and it addresses each of the areas that we have discussed and have presented over the past several, two meetings, February the 19th, other meeting in March, as well as the request at the Board of, County Commissioners' meeting last Monday. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution as stated? Clint makes the motion. Do I have a second? Wendy seconds. Is there any discussion?
Couple of questions.
It's hot.
It is hot. Paragraph two, it talks about committed certain funds. Would that be the million dollars that we committed of unencumbered lottery and then, or the two million?
Total million.
Yeah. And then the 200,000.
If that was not included, 200,000, is that being ongoing debt service?
Okay.
Committed funds toward the front of the project, I believe that that paragraph refers to that.
Okay. Okay. And I guess the next question I got is in paragraph four. It mentions, I just wondered if you, if anybody's been in discussion with the county manager about the $5 million, because it says without a tax increase. And I just, is that what the commissioners have said, or it's what the county manager said?
The county manager has not stated about that, but the commissioners have stated that in the past.
In the past?
Yes. And that is previously committed $5 million is the way the resolution reads.
Yeah. From 2011.
I don't recall a specific date.
Well, I think, I think maybe some of the last communication we had was September, August, September 2012, was some of the last communication we had from one or maybe two commissioners.
Well, I just wondered, I went, I went back through the, our minutes of July the 25th, 2011, and our resolution with the renovations and the, I think, the letter that we got from the commissioners, and it talked about this $5 million and it, you know, and I do know that it was said that, you know, at that time, it would be no tax increase. But I guess my concern is it's 21 months later, and, you know, I would want to, I would hope that we would have verified that, but anyway, so it looks like we haven't.
I think some of the last communication that I had was an email in September, on September the 4th, 2012, there was some email communication went on, was some of the last communication, and we had talked about that. But we can let the commissioner sort that out.
Each of these items listed in the resolution are items that we have already discussed and we have, the public have seen and heard. It's just a repeat of those.
That's going to do it? Can you hear me now? My, sort of along with what Steve's saying, is it, is it us presuming that the conditions that were told before still exist? I don't know. I don't want to put, I don't want to put words in their mouth. I don't want to bind them to anything, and maybe they don't want to be bound to anything that was said before. The $5 million was, before we were on the board, was a commitment of $5 million specific to the renovation of the existing campus with the school board using $1 million. Can anybody speak to that?
I guess the only thing I would say is, I mean, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about something that, quite honestly, we don't have control over. I mean, we're, I think we're basically just making the comment in this resolution that this is an item that has been committed in the past. Can things change? I'm sure they can. But this is, I think we're just making a statement that this was committed in the past. That's, that was a commitment that was made to solve this overreaching problem, if you will. So I don't know, I think all we're doing is making the statement that that's been committed. That's my opinion.
The reason why I'm bringing it up for all of us is that I don't want the commissioners to feel like they're being forced into a box. It's their responsibility, we've known that from the get-go, to figure out how to fund it. I repeat, I didn't vote for a new high school project to start with, but there was a next meeting several months later where I did vote on securing that architecture firm that came up with the plan that we're now looking at. My intention for doing that was for some consistency, because that group had worked with the previous board before I was in here, and it would have been a savings of money to use them over the people that did the research part for us. If the research piece was used as an identification tool of that as a specific need, another piece of this, and I don't know this, that's why I'm asking, should this resolution, I don't think it should be assumptive, is that the right word? Presumptuous? Is that the right word? I don't know. I don't think we should assume in our wherés and therefor's what the commissioners could or couldn't do. And I also am thinking, would it not be wise for us to put something in this request for a bond referendum for funds for other school projects that are looming? I'm asking.
The county commissioners asked us to do a resolution based on what they've heard from us, and that is what we're giving them, is the resolution that they've asked for. We have presented, Dr. Hartness has presented, and that's what this, this resolution basically says, what we've had, what we have voted on and presented to the commissioners. The other questions that you have, I can't answer those right now, because I'm not the funding body. And we are focusing right now on the new Davie High School, and the steps in this whereas resolution is what we, as a board, have voted on and shared with the county commissioners.
I'm not arguing with you. But if you focus on the car in front of you, and it's nasty weather, and there's a wreck five cars up, and you don't look down the road, but you only pay attention to the car in front of you, there is going to be a serious pileup down there somewhere. And that's a nasty analogy coming after the fog incident coming down 77 North. But I don't want the wording of the resolution to be an out. Is that a fair statement? And I don't want to box the recipients of this resolution such that the result that we're after is not achievable.
Am I making too big a deal out of the resolution? I mean, I mean, I feel like we're making too big of a deal, because we've got some fancy words with the whereas and everything else. I mean, we're not, they've asked for a resolution. Here's a resolution. It does not, oh my goodness, they've thrown a resolution on us that says this. Well, no, there's no more pressure. You know, I don't want to be a commissioner. I don't want to be, I don't want to bear that burden. But the burden's on them, period. No matter how we word this resolution, I just, I feel like the, this is just what they requested. And so, we've put together what we have as a board, whether the vote, however the vote went. We're moving on. Here's what they, we presented to them. Hey, we'd like to have that in a resolution. Great. Here's a resolution. Nothing's changed, in my mind, from where we were weeks and weeks ago.
And I think, too, I mean, even though we're submitting a resolution, we have no control over how they respond to that resolution. So, I feel like the resolution is more or less just something they have asked us to do. We're providing it back. And I'm not sure that, I mean, us doing a resolution doesn't force them into doing, I mean, so, I think this is just a summary of what we are, you know, what we've put out there.
We've already, I think, we've already made a request. And I think all this does is, is put it in a formal resolution. I mean, I don't think there was any question about what the request was. I think it was fairly, fairly clear. I think this just puts it in a formal document, if that's what we want to call it. So, I would.
I guess, I guess one last point I want to make is, I think you made a good point, is the fact that things do change. And I think, and then what Paul says, that, you know, here, what's going to happen if they can't, if they have to increase taxes to take care of that five million, you know, and then, you know, you said that you wasn't going to increase taxes. Again, it was 21 months ago. Times has changed. I think Paul's right with painting them in a box. But anyway, you know, I mean, I'm not going to support it anyway, but I just wanted to bring this, I just wanted to bring this out.
Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. And we have a motion for the resolution of Clint and Wendy. Is there any more discussion? All right. We have a first and a second. I will call for the vote. All in favor of the resolution, please show a hands. Five. All opposed, two. Motion passes, five to. All right.
Madam Chair, you'll also notice in your documents on Board Docs that there were some questions submitted by Commissioner Jones via the county manager, and I have included those on your Board Docs. There were four questions that were submitted. He had several requests before he could proceed in timing for a bond vote. I wanted to share those with you, and share with you the staff response to those, and give you an opportunity to give me some feedback or, before I submit these to the county manager. Some of these questions have already been addressed in our frequently asked questions document, but I wanted to go through those. The first question that he wanted to consider was our budget request for the upcoming school year. Later in our agenda, I have a budget update. We're preparing a budget for 2013-14 based on the information that we have right now. We're going to present to you a draft budget resolution by May the 1st, as the law requires us to do. We'll resubmit our budget request to the commissioners on May the 13th. The time has been determined as eight o'clock on May the 13th. I'll be presenting to the commissioners. Based on the information that we have right now, staff would not recommend that we ask the commissioners for any more allocation than we've received for the last four years. So, we anticipate to ask them for the same allocation. The second question, their plan and timeline to address the needs for middle and elementary school renovations is found in the little study. Also, how they propose to fund the needed renovations. I believe the study found around $40 million in needed renovations. And I provided a summary here. The 2012 facilities assessment identified needs at our schools based on the enrollment in 2012. The high school needs were identified as our top priority. The needs at the elementary and the middle schools, the architectural firm worked with Michael Spillman and Jeff Wallace and our staff to prioritize those in the four areas, Priority One, Priority Two, Priority Three, and special projects, additions and renovations. The firm helped us to do that, and schedule out our Priority One projects, which are primarily HVAC, roofs, mechanical, things like that, over a 10-year period, because it was a 10-year plan. Another recommendation in that process was that the Board of Education redistrict our district boundaries to better utilize the school facilities we already have. And if we did that, we would eliminate some of the additions and renovations that they outlined, based on the enrollment at the school at the time they did the study. We, you adopted a plan in January. We're implementing that in the fall of 2013. So, therefore, that's going to eliminate some of the requirements, or some of the recommendations, I should say, for additions at some of our schools. In 2013-14, our budget committee within staff is, is working to develop our list of capital outlay projects. We're going to address a number of our Priority One projects, and some of our Priority Two and Three projects that were outlined in the assessment. Our capital outlay budget that we present to you later this month will include items like roofing, covered walkways, painting, carpet tile replacements, HVAC, fire alarm system upgrades, and paving. So, that, we will do projects like that in our next budget cycle. We feel like we'll be able to address the highest priority needs in our middle and elementary schools over the next 10 years, which is the duration of the long-range facility plan. The two sources of funding that we will put toward those renovations and those repairs will be the half-cent sales tax appropriation for capital outlay that flows through the county, as well as lottery funds. And you saw an example of that tonight, of how we use lottery funds and other funds for, for projects like the HVAC at Coolamie. In addition, we anticipate there will be very little need for capital outlay projects at the new high school for at least a five-year period. It's going to be a brand-new school. So, the money that we've been spending at the high school will be freed up to address more elementary and middle school needs. So, during 2016 to 2021. Commissioner Jones also asked if we had a backup plan for the high school in case the bond doesn't pass. And the board has not developed a backup plan. You have not instructed staff to develop a backup plan. The majority of this board voted for the plan that's been presented, and feels like it's the best long-term solution for the needs identified. And number four, his last question was their projected increase in operation cost at the new school if the bond passes. Utilities, teachers, furnishings. I believe we're looking at approximately a 100,000 square foot increase in size. The architects that conducted our facilities assessment, we discussed that with them when they were here, and we asked them, if you build a larger school to address the capacity that we have, what's that going to do to your utility cost? And they looked at the mechanical systems at the high school. They determined that a new facility would be much more energy efficient. It would be much less costly to operate. It would be less costly to operate than heating and cooling mobile units that we have today. And even with an enlarged square footage, their estimate was that utility costs would remain very similar to what they are today. The new high school will be staffed similar to what it is today. It's based on enrollment, just like what we have today. So, we don't see an increase in staffing cost associated with operations, unless we see an increase in enrollment. Furnishings are included in the cost estimate that we presented to the commissioners on April the 1st. So, there's no additional operating cost associated with furnishings. So, I hope that we have adequately addressed the questions submitted by the Board of Commissioners, and those are there for your information. Anything that you would like for me to add?
Is there anything that you feel that Dr. Hartness needs to add? Commissioner Jones questions?
Well, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to add this, but it's just a comment I would like to share. I think that we need to make certain that we are not talking about $53 million at a high school versus $0 spent on a high school. We are talking about $53 million to build a new high school versus, I believe the estimate, what we came up with was close to 40 million for renovation over a period of time. So, I want, I want to make sure it's very clear. It's, it's not 53 and nothing. It could be 53 and 44. It could be 53 and six for 10 years, whatever. But I just think that's an important point, that there's a cost involved whichever way this goes. Now, the board made the decision to go forward and vote to build this high school. So, again, I don't know if that's the appropriate time to make that comment, but just thought I would just share that.
I was just going to ask, are these from Commissioner Jones or from the board?
Those are from Commissioner Jones.
Directly, okay.
I, I think those sound very appropriate, and I appreciate your time in answering them.
Does anyone think we need to add anything? They're very thorough. It tells it like it is. And I'm so glad you put in there the reference to the long-range facility study that we had, and the roadmap that we have now, which is a wonderful roadmap to have, so that you do know, you don't know what's coming up around sometimes. There's things that happen at your home. But at least, we've got a plan of action, as what needs to be fixed, when it needs to be fixed, and how we need to go. And I think that's wonderful.
I just want to add, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the questions, you know, and sending them the right avenue and finding out answers to his questions. So, I appreciate that.
It's either Barbara, or a combination of Barbara and some staff, including Dr. Hartness. The resident, what's, what's, what's the game plan? Resolution is presented to the commissioners, and then what?
I'll be glad to address that. They just requested a resolution, so that their attorney would have that as they determine next steps. The next steps are up to the commissioners. And Madam Chair, I would submit these responses to the county manager's office, so that they would go to all the commissioners. And I, too, Clint, appreciate Commissioner Jones asking the questions and giving us an opportunity to respond. And some of these we can add to our frequently asked questions document as well.
I think that's a great idea, to add them to the document. Do we need a motion for, to do this, or just directions from the board?
We move to approve the resolution.
Okay, we move, no, we already did the resolution to approve the questions being sent to.
No, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're doing it right. Just do it right. Okay. All right, good. I always want to make sure. Now, on the agenda is the public address to the board. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone sign?
We actually only have one speaker today, so we don't even have to talk about being on deck. If Mr. Dwight Goodman would please come and address the board, we'd appreciate it. And please, when you start, if you'd state your name and address, so if the board needs to get in contact with you, they know how to do that. And you have five minutes. It will be almost impossible to miss the timer. It's right in front of you.
Is it on? Okay. My name is Dwight Goodman. I live at 935 Peoples Creek Road Advance. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me speak here this evening. I've come to you tonight to speak a couple of things that have been plaguing me for the last year in this school system. It's the truancy problem we have. Students not going to school. I know it has to do with the parents, but we need to get tougher with these students. The unexcused absences that are required, which I think is 10, before any actions are taken, should be dropped down to five instead of 10. Two, I have got by a good resource, a good resource, information that students are texting test answers between students at Davie High. I've got this on a reliable source. I have eyes and ears at Davie County High School all day long. Two, I have found out already this school year that we've had 61 dropouts or transfers, moves, whatever you want to call it. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. As I said, we got 61 dropouts or moves and transfers this year already. I know of two of them that have already transferred to Mount Tabor. That's the Hatfield Twins. Last year, in February, we had 86 dropouts. This was a figure that was given to me by Beth Weatherman, Central Davie Academy. As I stated last year, and I said this on probably three or four different occasions with board members present, that we had 60 students out every day at Davie High. This was last school year. That's 300 a week, 1,200 a month, when we only had 1,800 students approximately in the county at Davie High. 2007, 2008, there were 200 dropouts. 2010, 2011, there were 125 dropouts. We need to do something about this, folks. This is a very, very passionate thing for me, because something happened last month, and it, it affected my family. My wife's granddaughter went through truancy court last year, or last month, in March. Eventually, back in November, I guess the judge set some parameters for her, and she must have followed him, because the judge released her last month, and the mother also. Well, a few days ago, I get a, I hear, I'm hearing between my wife and my wife's daughter speaking, that the child doesn't want to go to school now. Now, as I said before, we're wasting too much time, and the courts, wasting too much time with taxpayer money going through the courts. What we need to do is make a statement to these parents, that if students do not go to school after a certain number of days, unexcused, please, put them in jail. Put the parent in jail the way the parent and the child sees that we mean business. This is very, very passionate to me. This was one of my top priorities last year when I ran for school board. More discipline. We need more discipline in this county, whether it's parents, teachers, community leaders. Everyone has to jump in. Last year, I had made a statement that we needed to form a volunteer committee to find out what the problems are in this county, why students are not going to school. I've said this on a couple of occasions. I still have not heard any information from I still have not heard any information from anybody on the board or Dr. Harkness at all, so. We do need to find volunteers, and it won't cost anything. If I have to, I'll go pick them up and drive them around myself. But we've got to address this problem. Forget about the high school, because if you don't, you can build a new high school, but they're not going to go. It could be a one-room schoolhouse, or it could be a million-square-foot schoolhouse. They're still not going to go. We've got to find out why. We've had too many problems with this going on at Davie High and other schools in the Davie County school system. But we need to address this immediately, not tomorrow, not next week, not next year. Because I have been in contact with Linda Johnson and Mr. Langston, who are the two-chairpersons for the Education Committee of the General Assembly. And I'm going to be working with them, trying to get this bill passed for the dropout age be raised from 16 to 18. I hope the board will listen to what I've just said. And if you need to call me, pick up the phone, dial 941-3181. I will be more than glad to share all the information that I have. I have ideas that can work, but we just have to implement them. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on the agenda, it is our committee and staff reports, our new Davie High School website.
Just trying to get the internet up here. Okay. Well, as you can see, first of all, I'm so happy to be here. It's a privilege to be able to speak about this website. We've been working on it for quite some time now. And I just wanted to kind of walk you guys through a little bit of this and give you an idea of what, you know, what this website's about. And the site here is built for today's use of different mobile devices. We're a very mobile world right now, and the site is very fluid. And with fluid, the site will change with any device as you see it. If you go to other school sites, they're not going to be able to pull it up here on their mobile device. So, if you're a parent in the car rider line waiting to see what the lunch menu is going to be for tomorrow, you can pull it up while you're sitting in the car rider line. This site is incredibly fluid and very usable for the iPads and any phone or tablet you have. Let's see, there's different content areas on each of the websites. And with that being said, we have a feature area here, and that's on our district site, but we also have that on each of the school sites. And there's an events area, which is obviously down right now. And they just restarted the server for me. But we also have announcements and news on the sites. So, this is Davie High. So, you have your events here, and then all your feature area, and also their daily announcements are here. Up here, you'll see a global area, these students, parents, employees buttons. These are buttons that are going to be quick go-tos for anyone. They're on every single site. They're on every page. So, if you're a student and you want to see what's going on, if you want to get on Blackboard or Driver's Ed, you can just click on there, and there's a long list of different things that you can get to very quickly for things. And employees, the same with them, for professional development. And it's just their quick go-tos. But they're not applicable for every school site or every student, but they're, in general, they're used, you know, for everybody over their time. And just to let you know, we had over 6,000 visitors on the site today alone. Just over the last 30 days, we've had over 31,000 actual visits and almost 80,000 page views. So, you take that into account, you know, we had spring break, so there was a week where there was limited use of it. But just in the last, just today alone, I had them check, and we had over 6,000, which is pretty big. And we can also see traffic within our network and also outside our network, which is pretty cool. And I took a look at the top 10 school sites that have been using it that get hit the most. And our district does Davie High, and then North Davie and Shady Grove and Kern answer were some of our top ones that have the most, you know, people going to those sites. Lastly, I've had the opportunity to go and train at each of the school sites with different folks, because they can upload their own announcements, their own images, and things on their calendar, which is over here. So, I've trained a lot of assistant principals and then other support people at the school sites, so they can go ahead and upload that. The glory of this website is that you don't need an application on a computer. You don't have to be within our network. You can do it anywhere. And just for me to tell you how cool this is, I was going down 81. I was loading stuff up on the server in Minnesota while I was driving down 81 with my hotspot. How cool was that? Huh? I was not driving. No, thanks for clarifying that, Clint. But, you know, for people like me, this is like the epitome of coolness. I was able just to get it done, and that's the neat thing about this. So, if we have a snow delay or whatever, there's an announcement that goes up here, like we said, "Have a great spring break" to all the students. And we can take that up and down like this. So, the content management system that we have here is, it's beautiful. It's easy. Our school folks can use it, and it's very user-friendly. So, do you guys have any questions or anything you want to talk about?
Just a great job. Wow. That's fantastic.
Thank you. Well, we tried to make it linear, so it would make it easier for folks to navigate through. So, there's, hopefully, there's a lot of ease there. I'm still putting some content up, but this thing's going to, it's like any other piece of technology or news. It's constantly changing, and it's just going to keep morphing and growing. So, well, thanks for your time today. I appreciate it.
Mary, I want to say thank you as well to you and the Technology Department. This is many, many hours of work pulling this together, and all the people that you've trained out in our schools who will keep the content fresh. We just really appreciate this as an effective communication tool, not only with our community, but prospective employers of new business that come to Davie County, new people that come into our community will come here to learn more about our school system. So, thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda is the 2013-2014 budget. Dr. Harkness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Technology Department's going to switch over to my computer now, and I have several slides that I'd like to share with you that I've uploaded to your board docs as well. Just going to start our budget discussion. We're going to base this on the information that we have today, which is not a lot from our state and federal government yet, but we're going to just share with you where we are today in the budget process and what our next steps are. So, let's do a little review. And we'll start with enrollment. You see a chart here that shows enrollment trends over the past 10 years. And you'll see our enrollment has been fairly flat. Starting in 2003, '04, we were just over 6,000 students. We peaked in 2008, '09. And last year, we were at 64,83. This year, this next year, our planning allotment is based on 6,489 students, which is six more students than we have this year. So, from this chart, you can see that our enrollment is fairly flat. If we go back to our facilities assessment and our demographer, there's a prediction that our enrollment remains fairly flat over the next 10 years unless there are major economic changes in the community. And that's playing out exactly like was predicted. Here's a few things we know about the state budget right now. With enrollment increasing by six students, our state funding is expected to be fairly flat for 2013, '14. But we've seen a tremendous increase in benefit costs for employees. In 2013, '14 compared to 2008, '09, we'll spend almost $2 million more in employee benefits than we did in 2008, '09. Couple examples of that, hospitalization has, the contribution, employer contribution has increased by almost $1,200 in that period of time. The increase is projected to be at $156 per employee for next year. The retirement contribution in 2008, '09 was 7.83%. Next year, that's projected to be 15%. So, those are costs that increase per employee, which affects our overall budget. And we've had to adjust that over each year. So, that's been a trend that we've seen with hospitalization and retirement contribution increases. The legislature is on, has promised us they're going to try to get us a budget early June. We hope that they will stick by that. That will help us with planning for next school year. The state economy, according to fiscal research at General Assembly, continues to recover at a rate of 3% to 5% annually and is expected to continue to recover over the next few years. So, that's encouraging. Wanted to give you a picture, and I shared this same slide last year with you. This gives you a picture of where our revenues come from as a school system. In North Carolina, we rank 11th in the nation, second in the southeast for the highest percentage of funds from state revenue. Unlike a large percentage of school districts across America, we are heavily dependent upon state revenues, the state public school fund for funding schools and education in North Carolina. 62% of our revenue comes from the state. And you'll see the other percentages there. Local current expense and special designated revenue funds locally is about 22%. Our federal percentage is 6.2%, and I'll share with you kind of how that comes about in just a few minutes as well. We had a small amount of race to the top monies, and then we have capital outlay fund, and then a designated child nutrition fund, which is an enterprise fund that's separate. So, that gives you an idea of what our revenue looks like. And when you spend that money, this is how that breaks down. We are a personnel-intensive organization. 80.1% of our revenue is spent with salaries and benefits. Child nutrition fund is 5.8%. Again, that's a separate fund. You can see capital outlay, property services, and other expenses. So, about 80% of our budget goes towards salaries and benefits. So, when you have reductions in state funding, you will see reductions typically in staffing as well. We're large enough as a school system that the majority of time, I don't know that this school system has ever enacted a reduction in force or layoffs. There are some smaller districts that that's their only option in dealing with reduction in state funding. We're large enough that we have turnover in a school year so that we cannot replace positions over time to handle budget cuts that come our way. Our federal money that I talked about a few minutes ago, Davie County does not get as much federal money as some other districts because of this next chart. Last year, I showed you this chart. The state of North Carolina, the federal government used census data to determine the poverty, percentage poverty by population of students that are aged 5 to 17. And last year, in 2012, Davie County schools ranked with the 12th lowest percentage of students living in poverty. So, the higher your poverty ranking, the more federal monies you get. The lower your poverty ranking, the fewer federal funds you get. The fewer federal funds you get, the lower your overall expenditure for education is. And that'll make some sense as we move along through here. The encouraging news is this next chart that shows what our federal planning allotment will be based upon this next year. We've moved from 12th to 9th. So, we have lower levels of poverty in 2013 than we had in 2012. That will affect our federal funding. We do not have federal planning allotments yet. There are some discussions that, and you've heard this in the news, about sequestration and budget cuts at the federal level. We really don't know what that effect is going to be yet. That effect will primarily be targeted toward exceptional children's programs and Title I programs that are federally funded. So, we don't know exactly where that will be yet, but this is how our federal funding allotment is determined. It's based on poverty ranking, and we're ranked 9th. That's something that's good news in Davie County. That means few of our children are living in poverty. When you look at funding from a state perspective, this is a chart that the Department of Public Instruction put together, and it shows that since 1970, the public school's share of general funds has decreased by 15.2%. If our public schools earned or were allocated the same percentage of the state general fund as they were in 1970, we would have over $3 billion more for public K-12 education. So, you can see that priorities have changed in North Carolina since 1970. And this past year, just over 37% of the general fund went toward public schools, which leads us to national rankings. Last year, I showed you this chart that was produced by the Public School Forum that ranked North Carolina 42nd in the nation in per pupil expenditure. Now, I'll explain a little bit of this farther. There are some things that you should not assume when you look at a chart like this. There is a different cost of living in different states. There are other factors that should be considered when you look at any type of chart like this, one of which is schools are funded much differently in some other states. If you look at Pennsylvania with over, I think they have over 500 school systems, most of those are community-funded, community-based school systems that really are dependent upon local taxes. And there are some very wealthy school systems, and there are some very poor school systems based on the economy in those communities. In North Carolina, we, across the state, are so heavily dependent upon the state, more of our schools in the state are more equally funded from a state perspective. So, we don't have such wide ranges of per pupil expenditures. There are some school districts and some counties in North Carolina that contribute a lot locally. You look at Dare County or other places, Orange County, their per pupil expenditure is tremendous based on the wealth of their community. So, that's where we were last year. We ranked 42nd. There was another report that came out a few weeks ago from NEA that ranked North Carolina 48th. So, even if you, none of this has been factored for cost of living and other things. So, even if you look at this, the bottom line is we're ranked near the bottom in the nation when it comes to expenditures toward education. So, one might debate whether we're 48th or 42nd or 46th, but the gist is we spend less in North Carolina on education than other states. That's total per pupil expenditure, state, local, federal combined. I've shown you this chart before. This was part of the study in 2011 that ranked Davie County 105th out of 115 school districts in total per pupil expenditure. And again, I would go back to the fact that our federal funds really makes a difference. When our poverty ranking is as low as it is, that's a fortunate thing for our community, but it affects our overall per pupil expenditure, causing us to be ranked near the bottom in the state. When you look at our local contribution, we're below the state average, but we're about right in the middle. So, it's not our local contribution toward education that causes us to be 105th. It's the overall per pupil expenditure. There were two charts produced by DPI last year that just kind of give you a visual of the number of students in the state and how the economy in the state has changed the number of employees that are working in public schools. You'll see in this chart, the number of students, we have just under 1.5 million students in the state of North Carolina, and that number is growing. North Carolina is a destination of where people want to live. The blue line on this chart shows the number of public school employees in the state has been declining. At the same time, the number of students has increased. You saw a dip in 2010. That's the year the law changed, and we had fewer kindergartners coming into school that year. This chart shows you, the blue is the contribution by the state funds toward the per pupil expenditure, and the green in those three years, '09, '10 through 2011, '12, was the federal stimulus money that the state pretty much used to supplant what they were already providing in the past. So, we depended upon those stimulus monies for three years, and you can see how the per pupil expenditure from the state has declined since 2008, '09, along with the teacher's salary average. In the orange line, again, that's the enrollment, which has been increasing. And then the blue line or the purple line shows you the decline in per pupil spending as a state. On a local level, this is a percentage of expenditures by function. This is the Davie County budget, and it's broken out by the different This is the Davie County budget, and it's broken out by the different expenditures. And you can see that education is in blue, is that top line. In 2006, 29.8 percent of the budget in Davie County went toward education. This past year, 24.1 percent went toward education. So you can see the trends there with education, human services, public safety, debt service. You can see the trends there. And the trends there and the trends with the state just reflect priorities. So when we look at a closer look, again, I'll reiterate that the lower poverty rate equals fewer federal funds for education in Davie County. I put this second piece here because there are a lot of people that, when as soon as a chart comes out that describes per pupil funding, they say, "Well, more money just doesn't mean better quality education." To some extent, that's very true. Quality education depends on the quality of teachers that we have in our classrooms. But I've got something in my hand here that kind of describes where we are. Our teachers are like a rubber band, and we're stretching them to the max. We're getting results in Davie County. I shared, as the State of Davie, I shared at the commissioners' meeting last week, where we rank in the state is incredible based on the, the money that we spend toward education in Davie County. But you can only stretch your rubber band so far, and at some point, unless our state decides to reprioritize expending in North Carolina, this rubber band is going to break. And we're going to see a decline in the quality of public education when we continue to put more and more on teachers and fund schools with less and less, and we dilute the public school fund with all the different options that are out there, at some point, the model breaks. It needs to continue to be reformed, but at some point, it breaks, and we don't have the luxury of hiring the best. We don't have the best people choosing to go into public education because jobs are scarce. At some point, that model breaks. So I hope that our state and our leadership at the state will consider their priorities and will reprioritize and, and consider where we want to go in the future. Higher spending does not produce better quality education, but at some point, there is a diminishing return, and there is, there's a breaking point. Education is budgeted differently across the nation. Cost of living varies across the nation. So when we look at those charts, we need to keep that in mind. While ranked at the bottom in spending, and when you saw that chart, you see where we're ranked in North Carolina. If North Carolina is one of the lowest-funded states in America, we're one of the lowest-funded districts in North Carolina, we're one of the lowest-funded school districts in America. And when you look at our results, bottom line, the citizens of Davie County are getting an incredible return on investment for the education expenditures that we have here. I put this statement, I believe this with all my heart, "Public education is an investment in our future." You all have heard my story, and I've told that before. It's made an impact on my life, and it all comes down to priorities. And the budget writers at the federal level, at the state level, at the local level, they just have to determine how important it is investing in public education for our future economy, for our country, for our state, and for our county. Now, using what information we have, we had a, a state planning allotment that came to us before the governor's budget came out. Deborah, I would probably say that's not a very good document to, to use because there were already additions and changes once the bu, governor's budget. We kind of got a glimpse of where we were going. We don't have a federal planning allotment. We'll have that a little bit later on. We don't know what the Senate's budget looks like. We don't know what the House budget will look like. But over the next six to eight weeks, all this will come together really quick. And what our task is now is to develop a draft budget resolution based on what we know now. And based on what we know now will not be a lot different than what we had this past school year. We don't see a tremendous decline in state funding. We see that about flat. If our enrollment were declining, we would have to make adjustments to staffing, but our enrollment is fairly flat. So I'm going to go through best-case, probable case, and worst-case scenarios. Best-case scenarios, the state will take a serious look at the teacher's salary schedule and state employee's salary schedule and provide cost of living increases and put our teachers back on the salary schedule where they, they should be. Funding for textbooks or digital resources will be restored. We hear that the textbook allocation will probably go away. There will probably be some allocation out there for either textbooks or digital resources. We're going through a transition stage with digital resources. A lot of the digital textbooks are no less expensive than paper textbooks. So we're going through a change and transition there as a state. Staff development, technology funding will be restored, and then discretionary reductions that we've had for the past several years will be eliminated. And the bottom line there is, we get about a $35 million allotment from the state, and then we're asked to identify this year, $1.6 million to send back. We hope that this, the legislature will eliminate that discretionary reduction at some point in the future. The current state economy will prohibit this scenario from taking place. So let's look at a possible scenario. We are building our budget based on a 1% salary increase, just based on our advice from DPI. That's a, a safe spot to be. If there are no additional state budget cuts, but discretionary reduction increases from 1.56 million to 1.6 million, that's, that's what our planning allotment calls for, a small increase in discretionary reduction. The legislature took, Deborah, am I right, about $16 million last year from the lottery to balance the budget? I probably should not be calling on you and just pulling numbers out, but I, I think that's close.
They took money from the lottery.
They took money from the lottery last year to help with the budget, so that was a non-recurring piece, so they increased the discretionary reduction this year. If there are no additional local budget cuts, we request the same allotment in local funding as we have the past four years. There's no additional federal stimulus or stabilization funding. If we see a decrease in the federal allotment due to sequestration, we will have to make adjustments in our EC and Title I budgets at that point in time. And with $800,000 in appropriation of fund balance, not filling some vacancies created through retirements and resignations and other incremental cuts, we will be able to address the required reductions without any layoffs or reduction in force. It just depends on where the state money comes in. It depends on where the federal money comes in, if we need to appropriate up to $800,000 in fund balance that is available. And when we give you the, the budget resolution, we'll give you a breakdown of where our fund balance is as well and according to our policy. We look at worst-case scenario, the Senate and the House would approve a budget cutting teacher assistant allotments in half as proposed by the governor. That was one that honestly baffled me, that the governor, in his first budget, would eliminate kindergarten, excuse me, would eliminate second and third grade teacher assistants. Right now, our allotment is based on the number of students in kindergarten, first, second, and third grades, and his budget calls for reducing that allotment, which is a dollar allotment, to just kindergarten and first grade. I think that's a really bad move, and I hope that the Senate and the House will not go along with that. And I think we, as a, a school system, should push very hard and talk with our legislators that teacher assistants are a really important part of our instructional process. If local budget cuts were to be adopted on top of any cuts at the state level, and if there were a tremendous loss in funding at the federal level, then it would become necessary for us to, to go back and look at our budget and further reduce employment of staff. Our next steps, we're going to provide you with a draft budget resolution before May the 1st. We are scheduled to present a draft budget to the Board of Commissioners on May the 13th at 8:00 AM. That was confirmed today, and we're waiting on our federal planning allotment, our local allotment, adjusted state allotment, and this process just continues through the summer until we have a final budget sometime in the fall typically. And at this point, I'll entertain any questions the board might have about the budget update.
Dr. Hartness, I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know if you, it might be kind of like you said, Deborah Smink, it may be something that can't be answered, but, uh, tonight, but, uh, the, the, do you, do you know how many local-funded positions we got? I mean, I know that changes, I guess, but I guess my concern is we have to match the 1% increase, plus we have to match the cost of benefits on our local-funded position. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. I guess the, the other thing, well, of course, I think you kind of touched on this, I wrote it down, federal-funded allotment, if, if we, that's going, most of that stuff's mandated, so if it's, so if we cut, we still got to do it whether we get the money or not. It won't be a situation where, well, no, we don't have to do that anymore because we're not getting the money for it, but I think you touched on that and answered that. I, I guess the other thing I'm, I'm really concerned about, and I think you are too, is the, the TA positions. And I, I've tried to read and try to figure out what's going on on this, and I don't know if you know, know any more about it, but I've, you know, they said that they would cut that money and it would go to the, to hire more teachers and cut classroom size. Would that go, would that go only to the, would, would that money not be, stay here with us, that we, we could do that? And let me finish, I heard one other thing, it would be up to the local LEA to determine how they wanted to use that. I don't know, I just...
I will tell you, Mr. Ridenhour, when we first heard that the governor was going to increase the number of teachers in North Carolina and decrease the number of teacher assistants, we thought, "Well, that's a wash." So, you know, if the money comes to us, we would be able to choose whether or not to employ more teachers or to keep our current teacher assistant staffing. That's the way the media reported his budget to begin with. That was not accurate because we asked for clarification. The clarification we received was, I think there was a report, Mr. Ridenhour, that there would be 1,800 more teachers. I don't know where that actually came from, but that was just money to, for growth. You know, when I showed the chart that showed the growing number of students, that was just money to cover growth for the number of students in the state. So only school districts that had growth would have gotten additional teacher positions. So the bottom line is, the governor just cut the teacher assistant allotment in half, so we wouldn't be able to choose whether or not to keep teacher assistants and employ more teachers. Am I accurate there, Deborah?
Yeah, that, I think that's what I was looking for. So in other words, if you don't have growth, you just lose money. So, and it'll go, the, the money that would have sent to Davie County for teacher assistance would then go to counties that are experiencing growth and...
From what I understand, the governor's budget builds reserves, builds state reserves. So we're talking about cutting teacher assistants and building state reserves. I, I don't know that I buy that philosophy, but I'm not the governor. And the, the other thing that's a little more comforting in this, the Senate has talked about cutting teacher assistants at least the fat, last five sessions or so. This has always come up, and I don't know if it's a bargaining chip, what it is, but I hope that our legislators will understand the value of teacher assistance and not put this out there and, and have our employees and teacher assistants across the state worried about continued employment.
I don't want to go, I'm going to say this, but I, I've got to figure out how I want to say it. I don't want to get back to the high school issue, but this is my concern. You know, we've only got one place to go to. We, we don't have a lot of negotiating power with the federal government. We don't have a lot of negotiating power with the state government. The only place we got to go for additional monies is locally. And I am concerned that we are tying our hands educationally in the future, and that's all I'm going to say.
Does anybody else have any question for Dr. Hartness?
I have questions, but I know from the questions, he's not going to have the answers, and Deborah won't either. You, you said earlier that you, you can't make hard-line decisions on dollars because you don't know where those revenue sources look like yet. You're anticipating what they would be. Somewhere in your comments, you were saying that you anticipate the cost of doing business, hospitalization's going to go up, retirement's going to go up, and your intentions, and our resolution is to not ask the commissioners for any more budgeted dollars for this next year than we did for the last four years. Correct?
That's correct. I want to be sensitive to the situation the commissioners are in. They have revow this year, and I think that that's reasonable for us to request the same amount of money and not go to them and, and ask them, as the legislature does at times, to pick up on shortfalls that the state has been responsible for in the past.
The part that, that you can't answer right now, I don't think, is we've borrowed, we have used money out of the fund balance for the past how many years to do business as regular. I don't know what that fund balance is. Somewhere on here, I just saw roughly at this time, 800,000, and that number would be adjusted. You'd know that in the next couple of months.
We would know that in the next couple of months, and the fund balance, if you remember the chart that I was showing where the stimulus money came in for those years, the fund balance increased each of those years and was reserved for when the federal money was gone. So for the last several years, we have used fund balance to balance the budget in anticipation for the state economy to continue to recover and not have to depend upon the fund balance in the future. So that's where we are. We anticipate that the state economy will continue to recover and that the state will put back in money that they held back on while the stimulus money was there.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you for this update, and as always, it's a waiting game to see what's going to take place, but if you please make sure as, as the public and voters that you do contact our local officials and share with them that our concern is that we do want to see more teachers and more TAs, not less, in our school sites. I appreciate that immensely. Deborah, are you doing the mowing contracts? Thank you.
I am doing mowing contracts. In, in Mr. Wallace's absence this evening, I want to share with you, we awarded mowing contracts last month, and, and while these contracts do not meet, each contract does not meet the threshold where the board has to approve, totally, the, the total contract does, I, I shouldn't say it that way. Your threshold is $25,000 for service contracts. Each of these is below that. We're sharing these just for information. They're, each one is below that, but overall, we spend about $62,000 on mowing contracts each year. Any questions about the mowing contracts? Okay, again, as I said, it's just for information. The second item I have this evening is the donations report, and again, you can see we have very generous citizens in Davie County, and I have highlighted, this is the entire report, represents all donations received since July 1st, and highlighted in yellow are the donations received this past month, since the last report at your last board meeting. Any questions on the donations report for this month? Thank you.
Now, we're on, at closing, getting close to the end. It's time for board comments, and I think Steve, you're the first one tonight.
I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to, those that were honored tonight, congratulate them again, and Mr. Smith and the Odyssey of the Mind team, wish you the best of luck. You know, again, I just, I'm really concerned about our budget as we move forward, and I know it's a difficult situation, and I, I'm concerned about these teachers' assistants and what's going, how's going to impact the classroom. And I hope that something between the Senate and the House budget gets worked out, and we're, we're not faced with that. But again, I appreciate you coming out tonight and your support. Thanks.
Well, I too want to congratulate everyone here who was honored tonight from our, we celebrate athletics and we celebrate art successes, and it was so nice, and especially gratifying to hear from the very eloquent David Smith and his request for an emphasis on academics, and that was really exciting, and appreciate all that you've done as a parent and, and to lead this group to such a high level, and, and good luck, and appreciate all of that. I also want to thank Dr. Hartness for his presentation at the State of Davie. That was a great presentation. Anybody who got to be there, Davie County, we just shine. I mean, we have so much to be proud of here, and I appreciate you being asked to participate in that. That was wonderful of the group that held that, and was just really proud. in that, that was wonderful of the group that held that, and was just really proud. And thank you so much for your excellent and very thorough presentation the other night at the Board of Commissioners meeting. I thought it shared the vision of these schools and a solution that the board, this board has approved, and I thank all those who spoke, particularly, wanted to thank Dr. McConnell of Baptist Hospital for his very compelling support, and we've got lots to look forward to. It was great to see warm weather, and we have so much to be thankful for, but it seems like every month, we just always need to remember that we have families in our community that are going through difficult times, and so I would just ask you all to remember to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you again for attending and look forward to seeing you next month.
I would like to also thank and congratulate all the folks that were recognized tonight. Thank Mr. Smith for his hard work with the Odyssey of the Mine team and all the volunteers that put their time in so lovingly. I would also like to thank, as Carol did, I'd like to echo the thanks on the presentation at the commissioners' meeting. Thank everyone that spoke there, there was a tremendous crowd there, and it was good to see everybody out. Would like to also, again, thank Dr. McConnell for coming and speaking. The State of Davie was an interesting forum to hear from economic director, from you, from two mayors in our community. It was a really good discussion, it really was. And I guess that's about all I have. Thank you.
I pretty much feel exactly the same way Carol and Chad in terms of congratulating and thanking everyone. Something that just kind of struck me, looking at the calendar of events this year is flying by. My kids, after they went back after spring break, their teachers told them they had 44 days. So they are counting that down. But with that said, I think we all just need to sometimes sit back and realize how quickly time goes by. There are some families in our community right now who are struggling, and we really need to count every day as a blessing and not take things for granted, so that's all I have to say.
Echo a lot of the comments that have already been made. I think attendance at these meetings is really, really good. The group that was in here at 6:30 today, Clint and I were talking about, it's obvious that there's a lot of youth in the room because there was a chatter going on. But it was really, really good to see such a good spectrum of students from one side of the spectrum to the other. There's, we've got athletics, and we've got arts, we've got every piece of the arts. We've got academic people like Coach Smith. I'm just really proud to be a part of the school system that gets as much out of the system in the, the product is the students that graduate. It's just really, really neat to see that, I think it's hard for a student to fall through the cracks. They do, and if we have to pay attention to that, but there are many opportunities for them to excel, and we're getting a lot out of these students. So hats off to the teachers and the teachers' assistants that are there. I tend to think I'm an optimistic person, I try real hard to never be pessimistic. There is a new word that has come into what I believe is in my makeup, and that's concerned. I was glad to hear your comments during the budget discussion. I know that you're concerned, and I appreciate you sitting in that chair, doing that, and you working with the staff to get that stuff figured out. Budget issues scare me. They have since, back during campaign time, that was a big part of all that we have to do, is so tied up with dollars, and it's terrible, but we do. So keep up the good work. I too appreciated the presentations that you made on behalf of the board and the system and the staff and the students that we have here. Thank you very much.
Only thing new I have to add, well, side note, is the thing about thanking people and everything, I always leave people out, so I'm not a giant fan of this, but everyone, I think everyone's been thanked already, but I just, I appreciate Mary, she's back there, just her presentation and the, you guys couldn't see it, but the joy in her eyes talking about some of those, the technology, and it just reminded me that, thank goodness that we're different and that different things excite us, because if we were all the same, there would be a lot of stuff that wouldn't get done. I can think of a lot that I do not like to do. So anyway, I'm just, I'm very thankful for everyone's differences because it makes us better. So, thank you.
We deeply appreciate everyone being here this evening, and yes, we thanked everyone from very beginning to the end, but there's one thing that sticks with me is that, over the course of the past month, we have seen and heard from over 50-plus of our community, from all walks of life, from retired to businessmen, to moms, to dads, to grandparents, to aunts, uncles, and cousins, and even children. So to me, that sends a very strong message, and that is that all the work that's gone into budgets, to the long-range plan, to the academic plans, to the facility plans, to the new high school plan, that's the beginning, that's the first step. And we've taken that first step on the journey, we have begun the journey to having a world-class, a world-class school system. And each person who's in this room, who visited on the sites, who watched the school board meetings, who are now going to be able to watch the county commissioners' meetings, all of those people make a difference, all of those are part of the journey. And I personally, and I know the board does too, appreciate the time, the energy, and the commitment to the children of Davie High and Davie School System, regardless of which school there are, from Central Davie all the way to the high school. Every child in this system is treated as if they're the only one in the system, they're so special, and I appreciate that. And at this time, I would call for a motion to adjourn our April meeting. Paul makes the motion, Chad seconds, all in favor, 7-0. Thank you.